Here.
Tammy?
Yes.
Thara?
Yeah.
Lee?
Yes, and I cannot get my video to work, so you're just gonna have to look at my name.
Okay, you need to speak up just a little bit, but that was great. Thanks. And Austin is here. Um, no changes or additions to the agenda. The next item is the approval of minutes, and the first one is April seventeenth. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any corrections to the minutes? Okay, so I'm gonna propose that we accept the minutes by unanimous consent. If there's any objection to that, let me know. Okay, no objection to that. Um.
And you don't have, uh, May twenty-second yet, so that'll have to be next time.
Yeah. Okay, um. Public comment. Um. I am, I, I'm having trouble seeing whether or not we have members of the public, so.
Right now, we have two attendees, and if either of you would like to speak, uh, raise your virtual hand, and I'll let you into the room.
Thank you, Sharon.
I am not seeing any hands.
Okay. All right, thank you for, thank you for doing that. So, um. Uh, the next item is the president's report, so. We need to appoint, uh, Jean to the buildings and, I need to appoint Jean to the Buildings and Facilities Committee, which I'm, I'm happy to, happy to do. So, uh, let that be noted. Now have a new Buildings and Facilities Committee member. Okay.
To wait before you go on, what this also means is that Tammy gets to step down from Buildings and Facilities.
Lucky Tammy.
Tammy, thank you for your distinguished service in keeping the building in as good a shape as you did for as long as it did.
Well, years ago, I used to chair Building and Facilities, so.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Okay.
You're welcome.
So I have one more thing. So I also think that because Tammy is stepping down from Buildings and Facilities, uh, she would also like to step down from JCPC, which means Eugene would be our representative to JCPC, if you will.
That's what a disappointment. Sure, that, that's great. Tammy, are you willing to be replaced?
Oh, absolutely.
All right, good. Consider yourself replaced. All right, that's really good. Um. Next, Library Building Committee. Lee, you have your hand up?
Yes, uh, does this mean that I am no longer on JCPC?
No, it means that you're there with Jean.
Yeah, it means now won't go to JCPC.
Oh, okay.
Nice try.
My heart was leaping up. But I will lower my hand.
Okay, thank you so much. So Library Building Committee, um. We had a Building Committee meeting, uh. I don't know, yesterday, day before? And, um. Progress on the building, uh, project seems to be terrific. Um. We are assured that so far, things are going on schedule, though of course, it's early in the, um, in, in the process. Uh. The, um. Architects, the OPM, and the general contractor, uh, representatives of all those groups with Sharon, myself, and, um, Bob Parent are meeting on a weekly basis, uh, just to hear updates about what's going on in the, um, on the project. Um. I've found those meetings to be unbelievably interesting and important. Um, the level of coordination, uh, the work that they are doing, uh, together seems to me to be just, um, uh, just great. Uh, the HUD funds have come through. Um, the roof rebid is all set. And, um. As you may know from going by the library, uh, the general contractor has, as they say, I guess, in the general contractor business, mobilized on the site. Um, there are a variety of things they have to do on the site uh, that we heard about in the, on the Building Committee, including doing things like making sure that there's a, a, a working fire alarm system. So, uh, fencing is going up. Uh, trees have come down. Some of the trees that were taken down were not on our property, and they were removed at the request of our abutter. Um. They've begun to work their way, beginning to work their way down from the third floor in terms of preserving, um, woodwork. Uh, so, so far, things look the way they should look at a construction site. Um, and they will be moving on to the next steps. The next steps will involve, uh, among other things, uh, removing the nineteen nineties addition. So that's my, Sharon, did I leave anything out from the Building Committee?
No, that's perfect.
Uh. It just, you know, we're, we're building a new library, and it, um. Uh, it's, it's, it's great. I think we've got a terrific team of people. Um. Doing, doing the work for us. So. Any questions about any relating to the building project or the Building Committee? Yep, Thara?
No question, just a comment. I have to say, every day I drive by, because my kid is doing driver's ed, and I come past the library, and I feel so good when I look at the building. I mean, it's, yeah. Just wanted to say that.
How's he doing? How, how, how's driver, driver's ed going?
Well, apparently I'm being told off for all the things that I'm doing wrong when I drive right now. It's only day two.
I have recent experience on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And as Eugene will tell you, it only gets worse.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I always, I receive most times.
Then it really gets worse, and then they get their own license.
I was gonna say, it gets, it gets much better when they get their own license.
No, it gets much.
Your life will become much simpler, because, and, and they even like to do things like drive to the grocery store.
Looking forward to that.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, this moment of group therapy has ended. Okay, so back to task. Okay, next is a Buildings and Facilities Committee Report, Thara.
Okay, so first I want to say thank you, Tammy, for joining Buildings and Facilities and for taking minutes. Because I guess Eugene knows what's coming his way.
I have one set of minutes to do.
Okay. Um, so George and Sharon said everything was fabulous at one oh one university. I mean, it's really good to be in a building where things work, a good light, um, the landlords have been amazing. There are certain things like, uh, ESL has to be done through special appointments. That, that's what you said, right, Sharon? But in general, and in general, they, there, there's a, um, uh, what's it called? A ticker? Like, uh, thing that monitors the number of people walking in, right?
Our patron counters, yeah, there's, uh, capacity limits.
Yeah, but, but apparently it, it's, it might be off because people are going from upstairs to downstairs and all that, all day long. Um. The, Sharon said how the staff has done an amazing job, but the space flows are great. The one thing that seemed not great was safety. I think later in the day, you had kind of mentioned that, Sharon, though you've talked to the fire department and to the police and to CREST, and we had talked about maybe seeing if you could have CREST onsite for later in the day events, just because the children's floors downstairs. Um. I think that, oh, there was stuff like the table, the two table leaves that, that they found that belonged to a table in special collection, so George was kind of excited about that. And they're looking forward to put that, putting that together. Um. I guess that's it. Summer reading program's still going on. The big party is this weekend or next week at the Drake. And it was good to have positive Buildings and Facilities, uh, meeting without talking about buckets and leaks and elevator failure. So, yeah, it was all good.
So, yeah, could someone say a little bit more about the safety issues? I, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Can I, let me jump in. So two things. One, so, so the safety, the problem, um. The, the problem is we're separated between six different suites at one oh one, and we're on totally separate, separate ends of, of the, of the building and on two different floors. So, um. But no one department is alone, but many people are in suites alone, and, um, that's a, it can be a little nerve wracking, so we don't have the sightlines. Um, and uh, so yeah, when we did, we did the walkthrough with police and fire and CREST, and, and CREST does stop by when they can. Um, it, we, we've talked about, you know, getting walkie talkies. We all have telephones, and we all have cell phones. We all have those on us. We also have safety words, um, so we can call each other and, and, and use these phrases. Um. But according to, it was, it was fire, I think, that, that said, w- walkie talkies tend not to work in these metal buildings, so, um, I, I don't think the walkie talkie, uh, possibility w- w- will work for us, but, um, you know, so far, that, so far, it's not a problem. Um, and, you know, police and, police and fire are very aware of where we are, and it's, um, it's, it's heavily populated. Lots of people are coming in and around. Um, you know, we have neighbors that are, so it's an active building, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. Um, the other, the other thing that we, we talked about during the meeting was the fact that there just isn't enough space there. Um, you know, so, so Special Collections and ESL having to make appointments to talk with them, but also not having space for onsite programming, with the exception of this tiny little room. Um, it's definitely, it's a, it's a problem. You know, there will be more offsite programs. But that can be difficult because we also have to staff the site. So, um. Anyways, yeah, I just. The, the landlords have been amazing, so responsive and accommodating, um, and we're getting more and more settled in. We've been very lucky to find this place.
Yeah. Are there no, is there nothing like, um, a kind of panic button system that you could get set up in that, um, at one oh one?
You know, we've been trying for years and years and years to get that even through, um, at, at the Jones', and, and we were not able to because our alarm company at that time didn't offer it. We, uh, there is not, there's an alarm system at one oh one, but we do not control it. Um. I wonder if we could ask about that possibility? So maybe.
I think, I think it might be good making an inquiry.
Yeah.
You know, a little button under someone's desk is, um.
Thank you.
All right, any, any other questions? All right, thank you so much. Next, Lee Edwards.
Okay, this is, um.
Lee.
The Development Committee. Oh, hang on, let me see if I can make, can you hear me better now?
Barely.
Really? Better? No?
Not a lot.
Well, I'll shout.
There you go, that is fabulous.
I'm shouting. All right, so this is the Development Committee. And as probably most of you know, because a lot of you were at the party for Ginny, uh, in June, Ginny Hamilton, who was the, essentially, the, um, Chief of Staff of the Development Committee, decided that she was, it was time for her that the campaign was in a different stage, and she was leaving the, us to go back to her first love, which was political organization, that which she is wonderful, and where I'm sure her services will be, uh, welcomed. So we took this opportunity to essentially reorganize the campaign and restaff the campaign. And we have hired somebody full-time and somebody else half-time. Um, and, but the full-time person still has another job, and so we're not officially announcing it until this person has sort, has allowed the place where this person is working to accommodate to her departure, and then we will announce the new person who will be in place full-time with us no later than the beginning of September, uh, possibly earlier. Um, and the, the main, we, I mean, the campaign is in a different place because we have a project.
Yep.
And so, a, a, and perhaps maybe naively, but we are assuming that, um, the energies that went into public relations with the town, uh, that won't need to be, to be used in quite the same way. And that the main efforts are now working with the stewards and making direct contact with our donors. Uh, and so we're organizing a series of house party events, the first of which is happening this Sunday. So this is, and this is to put us back in touch with some donors, but also to broaden the number, the, the list of people, uh, who we can enlist, uh, in support. And the other thing that we are doing is we are reaching out because Kent and I are acutely aware of the fact that, um, we represent a certain generation. And we are reaching out, and we're having a meeting scheduled sometime before the end of August, with about a dozen uh, younger people, people in their fifties, to see about ways in which they might get engaged. Chief, initially chiefly with the capital campaign, but long-term with the friends to see if if, we are told that younger people have different ideas about how they would like to work as volunteers at organizations, and that perhaps the idea of the, the fixed meetings at fixed times is not the way to go, but. So anyway, so this is what we're doing. At the very least, we have a dozen new, you know, new people who have agreed to come to a meeting to tell us what they would like to do to help us. So that's also very good. Um. Okay, so then, uh, the tables of, uh, gifts and things are all in the packet, but it has been, I will confess, a rather slow start, but partly this is because we really haven't had any staff. Um, so we I forget, took in about for some reason, I can't find the, oh, oh, yeah, we took in twenty-eight hundred in the, uh, annual fund, and I, I can't quite make this out, but it, it says the total for the month of the capital campaign was thirty-six, three ninety-one. But the, the, the new line that I wanted to have put in, which is there, is that in the month of July, we received a total of a hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars in cash, most of which was pledge payments. So the pledge payments are, uh, starting to come in, and we, we have a system generated to, um, uh, get people, you know, on, on a calendar, because to, to find out which five years they're thinking they're spreading their, their pledge payment over. All right, some of them, some of them will do it five years from when they made the pledge, and some want to do it five years from when they knew that we actually had a pro, a project. We're urging people to take the last route, but we'll see. But I think this hundred, more than a hundred thousand dollars in pledge fulfillment was, is a good sign. So I think that's it for. No, the other thing for development is Sharon and I have different recollections about the, uh, whether the trustees acted to accept, uh, the Woodbury Funds as, as, you know, to ask for the, to say that whether we authorize the actual, uh, payment of the Woodbury Funds to the, the capital campaign. Not whether we act, asked to have the funds transferred, but whether we actually authorized the use of five hundred thousand dollars from the Woodbury Fund. I remember that we did, the trustees, but Sharon doesn't remember, so if we need to do that, I would make a motion that we authorize the use of five hundred thousand dollars from the Woodbury Fund it to aid the capital campaign.
Sharon?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that. So the friends, just so that you know, did, uh, they made this motion last November. I think it was November of twenty-four. Um, so you all would be approving their recommendation, and, um, and so the plan is, I'm, I'm getting ready to transfer a, a large sum of money to the town of Amherst, and so I'd like to, you know, combine the one point one of HUD along with this five hundred thousand dollars in Woodbury, and then I will also ask the friends, they have about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, to also send over to the town. So it would be a little over two million dollars. So we just need this final, this one more vote, and I can do that.
Could, could you just, I'm a little confused. A lot of numbers floating around. So you said they have four hundred and some odd thousand dollars, the friends. I, I don't, I don't understand what you mean. They.
The Capital Campaign Committee ha, is ready to hand over to the town four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That leaves a, a, a chunk of reserves for them, so they can pay, pay their ongoing expenses, operational expenses. Um, but they're ready to hand over four hundred and fifty right now.
Right, so when you say the friends, you, you mean the capital campaign aspect of the friends?
Thank you, sorry, yeah.
Okay. So let's just, uh, it doesn't hurt to vote twice if we voted once, but uh, so the, the motion lead is to, uh, authorize, uh, half a million dollars from the Woodbury Fund.
Right, move, right, to approve taking five hundred thousand dollars from the Woodbury Fund to use in support of the capital campaign.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Okay, I'm gonna ask you to vote, uh, Tammy?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Thara?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
And Austin votes yes.
Okay.
Lee, I, I have a little bit of trouble understanding this August first campaign report. It's just, maybe it's the way it's laid out. Um, it says in one column, total to date.
Yes. I share your confusion, and, um, I, I sent out an inquiry, and I simply had it explained to me again, as though it was obvious, so I'm glad you're confused. I will sort it out, and I promise by next month, we'll have staffing in place and we'll get, we'll get clarity.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Lee. Thanks for all the work. Okay. Next is, uh, PPP.
Okay, we have, uh, three items. Um. The first is related to, um, library, uh, cause, you know, the issue of Sharon being asked to sign petitions about library issues statewide as well as national. And we came up with the following recommendations, um, that there are critical, uh, national state library issues that may request, require the director to sign. Um, given the current cutting of library funding, we may need quick action. So, um, only the board may authorize legal action on the part of the library. So the PPP recommends to the board to consider this issue and to take the following steps. Consult with the town manager and the town attorney. Direct the board chair to provide authorization to the director if needed quickly. Um, we thought we should review the bylaws, um, and see if there are any risks to the town or the library. And just for your information, national issues include, for example, the cutting of ESL grant and other grants, the loss of the um, institute of museum and library funding, uh, the dismissal of the librarian of Congress, and probably a myriad of other related issues. So those were our general recommendations. I don't know that they need to be approved, um. And I'm not sure, Sharon, how we move forward with some of these, as far as consulting with the town manager and the town attorney.
So, sorry, I'm sorry, Tammy. So what I understand is, so in your packet is, uh, an updated, uh, proposed, uh, change to the trustee bylaws, uh, on page two. Uh, Article Four, Section Two, that whole section is brand new, um. It, it, reiterating the fact that it's the Board of Trustees that has authorization, uh, to initiate legal action. Uh, the other items that you were mentioning, Tammy, that would be more of a l- l- let's say, for example, somebody comes to me and says, hey, will you sign onto this legal petition? Then I would work with whoever the president of the board is. And reach out to the town manager, but I think for right now, I think, uh, the committee was looking for a, a, a vote on approving this Section Two addition to the bylaws.
Thara?
Uh, I was just wondering if we should pull that up on the screen?
Just so we can all look at it.
I, I don't have it. I'm on, because I'm home. I don't, I can't. If you can, I can.
I'll read it out loud.
Okay.
It said, this is a proposed amendment to Article Four of the bylaws. Article Four is entitled Duties of Trustees. The proposed amendment would be Section Two. And it reads, "The Board of Trustees has the exclusive authority to decide whether or not to initiate legal action." Period. "The trustee chair, in consultation with the library director, town manager, and town attorney, will analyze the issue and then call an emergency Board of Trustees meeting in order to vote on taking legal action." That is the sum of the proposed amendment.
Does legal action include signing a petition? Sharon?
Well, this comes from your, your committee, so.
No, uh, this was, uh, Sharon proposed this, but we did not discuss this at, well, our committee had no quorum yesterday, so we had no meeting.
Okay.
Sharon?
Yes.
Would this include signing a petition?
That's a great question. Uh, I would ask you guys.
So. Let's, let's talk about this for, for a minute. Um. I think if it comes to signing a petition on behalf of the library, you ought to consult with the Board of Trustees before you sign any petition. Now, if the petition does not, is not about the library, right, it's something about, you know, that you um, not speaking for the library, want to sign, has nothing to do with us, but if it's a petition that, let's say, says we want to restore funding for ESL, or we want to, you know, go to Washington and lobby for, you know, the restoration of the this or that, I think you ought to ought to get the consent of the board.
Okay.
No, 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 nope, not yet, okay. The question is, I want to make sure we are all on, Jean, Eugene's on board, Thara's on board, Lee's on board with that principle.
I'm definitely on board with that. I mean, in.
I'm definitely on board with that. I mean, anything done in the name of the library should go through the trustees as opposed to if you're doing that as a private citizen.
Farah?
So, so that would mean if, if it came up, we would have to call an emergency meeting or something, right?
Not necessarily. A petition needn't be an emergency.
I, okay. Unless there was an, some urgency in signing the petition.
Well, if it, if it's an emergency, then you have an emergency meeting. Or you authorize me to authorize Sharon in some condition of extremis, but I don't, you know, I don't know that this should be a, this is a problem because the signing of petitions hardly usually is an emergency.
Right.
But if it is, like any other emergency, Sharon would try to call a meeting of the board. Lee Edwards?
Just two brief things. Since we had no trouble meeting on Zoom, if we need to call a swift meeting to meet on Zoom, we can do that. And I do think that given the times we live in, collective assent, it, it, it is a good thing for the library, for the lib, the library director to have. So, you know, that we're all in this together and it's, it's clear to everybody because I grew up remembering vivid memories of, uh, the McCarthy era. And, uh, it, it's good to have friends and it's good to have people at your back.
Well, so what we have is we have a proposed amendment to the bylaw that does not refer to the signing of petitions. It refers to the initiation of legal action. And I think probably this act, this language is going to need to be reworked a little bit because presumably we have the inclusive authority to decide not only whether to initiate legal action, but how to respond to a legal action. So somebody is coming after us, Sharon doesn't decide on her own what the position of the library would be. So what do you think about sending it back for a little more work on the language?
Okay, we can do that. We won't be meeting until after the next board meeting, however, so it'll have to come back in October.
Oh, meantime, we have, I think, I think a clear enough understanding that Sharon doesn't operate on her own with respect to the signing of petitions, the initiation of legal action. Someone says, "We're filing a suit, we want you to join," or responding to any legal action. So I think that's pretty clear enough and it should be minuted that way. And then we'll, we'll amend the bylaw when we can to make sure it's there in perpetuity.
Okay.
A phrase I like to use as often as possible. Tammy, more?
Okay, yes. Um, because we didn't have a quorum yesterday, Eugene was unable to join us and we were supposed to, um, as a committee, approve the draft of Sharon's evaluation. Um, and Eugene is, is willing to do that now. So if it's okay with you, that Eugene and I, as the members of the committee, want to recommend that this evaluation be presented to the board.
Eugene, you join in making that recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, so it's now, we're going to, been presented to the board by the recommendation of the committee. You want to move its approval by the board, Tammy?
Yes, I do.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion of the evaluation? Tammy?
I would, I would just like to explain that this was a really trying year to get feedback and it's a longer report because I explained on the second page some of the, the issues that made it challenging.
Yeah.
But that's, you know, it speaks for itself. I think Sharon's done an extraordinary job. And I applaud her.
Yeah, Sharon.
Any other discussion of the library? Now, remind us, Tammy, of the process.
Okay, um, this is a complicated process. There's four different forms that go out. The one that you, the, the trustees is the most involved one. The staff have a different form.
Yeah, may I just interrupt? Because I'm sorry, my question was not,
Oh.
was not clear. I didn't say it in a very clear way. The process of communicating with Sharon about the evaluation.
That will come after it is approved by the board. And then I will meet with her with all copies of the evaluations and talk about some of the comments that were made. And, uh, she gets the whole packet.
Right, so you meet with her and review?
Yes.
All the eval, all the evaluations?
Yes, I will do that.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I meant, Tammy. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, okay.
Any other discussion of the, of the report on the evaluation process? Well, I will say, I think what you all know, which is that, um, over the course of the last calendar year, Sharon has done, I don't know, nine or 12 different jobs. Including being a director of a library. She's been involved, and, uh, as she has to be, in the details about the renovation expansion of the project. She's had to negotiate with state officials. And most recently, she has shown herself to be very adept at supervising a move from one building to the next. Though I was disappointed to see in the evaluation, there were no references to how many boxes Sharon herself packed. So we don't know whether her, her skill in that was about the packing or the supervising. But in any case, moving the building from one place to another, I mean, it's all been more than any human being should have been asked to do and well beyond the four corners of the, her job description. And, um, with her usual skill and grace, she's taken it, taken, taken it all on.
She has. It's remarkable.
And she did come up with a stunningly good way of cheering the staff at the, at the symbolic groundbreaking for the new library. Yet again, showing great ingenuity. So I think we're all grateful, Sharon, for the work that you've done on behalf of the library and the residents of, um, Amherst. It's really, really quite wonderful. Okay, Tammy, what else?
Well, we need to approve this.
Oh, yes. Sorry. Eugene, how do you vote?
Approved. I vote approve.
Tammy?
Yes.
Farah?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
And Austin votes yes. Thank you, Tammy.
Okay, I, the only other thing is the, the Jedi report. Jedi Committee report, if Farah, uh, wants to make a, a report, what's happening with Jedi?
What's happening is that we have not met since the last time I reported because we have not had a quorum. We are meeting this Friday at 11:30.
Thank you. That concludes the PPP report.
Thank you. Okay, next is budget and investment.
We met yesterday and it was, I have to say, a quite routine meeting. We went over the conclusion of the FY25 budget. And that seems to have wrapped up in good shape and we're waiting to hear from the auditor. And then we looked at the very beginning of the expense side of the FY26 budget and expenditures. And the one, one item of note, uh, which was very welcome, but also not surprising, the utilities expenses for the library are down by sort of a factor of almost 10.
Yeah.
Which is, which is, as I said, it was expected, but it's nice to see that it actually is happening. And that's a function, as Farah said, uh, earlier, uh, of having a building where the systems work. So that's, that's very good and it, I mean, it'd be good, it'll give Sharon a good cushion going forward, we hope. We expect. The only other thing, and this is, this is sort of a miscellaneous item. One of the duties of the treasurer of the Board of Trustees of the Jones Libraries is to go in every month and sign checks, which is a sort of Dickensian activity and I think I should do it with a quill pen and a green eye shade. And I could say I would prefer not to. So we took up, it, it, it also turns out that for reasons that are not clear, it might have to do with the move or it might be more mysterious. But in the past six weeks, a bunch of checks that I signed and I assume the library mailed, did not reach their destination. And so in addition to signing checks, the treasurer now has to go over to the bank and sign stop payment orders. So the treasurer brought up the possibility that we might look into switching more of our accounting to this newfangled thing called electronic banking. And so John Shannon is looking into that and, uh, our bank seems to think it, that it has a mechanism to enable this. I mean, there, there might well be people, you know, performers, sing with your baby or learn to play the banjo, who don't Venmo, who, you know, who want a check. But I, I can't believe that all your big vendors won't accept electronic payments. And, um, whether it's, yeah, I, I, it would make the, I, it would, it would bring, it would be good for the system to, to kind of do this. And there was, I mean, electronic banking does leave you vulnerable, although there, you know, the, the bank checks and there are fraud notices or whatever. But every time you have to do a stop payment on a check, it costs the library something. So, you know, one, one way or another, I think it would be good for the library to do this. So we're looking into it. That's it. It's a little bit of weeds for everybody.
So Lee, thank you, but I, I just want you to say, if you would, so electronic banking could mean that you don't physically write a check. You go online and you say, "Pay this vendor this amount," and the bank issues a check. That's one version of electronic banking. The, the, the other one is, um, you know, no, no check is issued, just money is moved.
Right.
And so I don't know whether, are you talking about both of those or?
No, I, no, I'm talking about the, the latter.
The latter.
Where you, where you just go in with whatever mechanism your bank provides and you say, "Take from this account and pay ever source."
And who would in this new system make those transfers?
We would have to work this out. It, it, this closest thing that I could imagine replicate the system that we now have would be, I would be in the room where it happens. John Shannon, I'd be very happy to have him do it, but I would have to be there. And we'd have to, I mean, we have to work, this, this just came up yesterday. John went to People's Bank.
Lee, we're having trouble hearing you. You're fading.
Oh, okay. This just came up yesterday, so the details of even a proposal need to be worked out, but
Okay.
Went to the bank, I'm going to go to the library tomorrow. I'm going to sign checks and I'm going to talk to John and we'll have another budget committee meeting and we'll take it up. And then I'll come back here again and take it up with you all. But, but supposedly, I, I'm, my name is, is a name.
Lee, I think we need to, to let Sharon take over from here because we are just having real difficulty hearing you.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Sorry, Lee. Uh, yeah, so, so, um, that our first, we, we've already dipped our toe into this with the credit card. So the library has a credit card.
Yeah.
And they're, because, you know, our number one concern, the auditor's number one concern is this system of checks and balances. That's the beauty of having somebody to come in and, and sign something. And so right now with the credit card, we still have all of the same people and approvals in place. So if a, if a department head purchases something, they're signing off on it and then it comes to me and I sign off on it. And then it goes through Tashi and John, and then it goes through the treasurer. And then it actually, you know, gets signed off on and, and submitted. So there is a way, an accepted, approved way of, of doing this and still have all the checks and balances in place. So, so we should be able to, to do this as well. At this, these past couple of months have been a little frustrating with the poor postal service losing. They lost about 20 checks altogether.
Uh, the town pays bills. How does it do it?
I think a lot of it, I, I, I think a lot of it is varied. A lot of it is electronic and, um, and I think they issue checks as well.
So I would check, as you develop this thing, I would check in with the town or the schools, I mean, you know, or libraries. I mean, this is, I'm sure there are models for how to do it in a way that does not require the treasurer to go physically and sit there and sign a check.
Thank you.
Okay, Lee, is that it?
That's it.
So Sharon, I have a question. Do you have any sense of what the future of state aid is going to be?
I love that you asked that. So, um, so do you mean across the state of Massachusetts in general, or do you mean to the Jones Library? What it's, what it's going to look like throughout the state of Massachusetts? I think it was level funded. So I think the pot will be what it has been. So that's great. There may have been some, some increase, but I, I don't remember what it is off the top of my head. But as far as the Jones Library, because state aid is based in part on circulation and the library had a smaller circulation because we were closed for a couple of months, we will have a smaller state aid award next year.
Yeah. Yeah. Do you have any sense of what the, you know, 10%, 15%? Do you have any sense of what the?
I don't know. Is it, yeah, it depends on how big the pot is and, and the circulation and usage figures of all the other libraries from across the state and, but no, I don't know.
Yeah, we need to keep our eyes on the state budget, um, going forward because of everything we know going on. And, and certainly the hit to state aid for the next year will not be easily remedied depending on what that hit is.
Uh, the other, um, the, the exciting piece, you know, as we start to head into the director's report a little bit, I'm finishing up the ARIS report. So every year we have to, the library counts everything that it did last year, all the stats, all of the attendance and books and everything that's been circulated. We send that off to the state. Um, so I'm finishing it up and our, our circulation stats are just about equal to the previous year. And that's even with us closed for a month and a half during the fiscal year. So, um, that's good news.
Okay. Any other questions about budget or investment? Lee, you said nothing about how well our investments are doing.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, that's also in the packet, but I have it here. Sorry, that's also in the packet, but I have it here. I don't have it here, but we're, the, the Woodbury Fund is around 800,000 and the the library's endowment is, I think, at not, around nine million. And it's, and, and it's in the packet. The numbers are in the packet, so.
Yeah.
I, I can't pull it up on my screen now, but.
Okay. Any other questions for Lee Edwards? All right, thank you, Lee. Sharon? We have no friends report, so.
No friends report and, you know, as part of the director's report, I, we took a lot of pictures as we were leaving the Jones Library building and, and that was a lot of fun. It, it's next to impossible to get every library staff member in one picture. But we, we did our best and again, they so it was funny how you asked how many boxes I packed. Maybe I packed 10 and, and what the rest of the staff did between the books and the craft supplies and, and everything. It's really, it's astonishing what they did and, and the remarks that they get as patrons are, you know, finding us at 101. It just feels so good. The, the staff really appreciate the kind words that the patrons are, are coming in and saying. And I have to tell you, I got this lovely phone call from Representative Dom last Friday. She was able to get a tour of, of 43 Amity Street just to see, you know, the snapshot, what it looks like right now. And she called me and she was so over the moon excited, not only for the building project. And one of the things she said was Fontaine, it's, it's such a clean construction site. So she was really raving about how, how great Fontaine is doing there and to, to see all the plywood up protecting all the historic woodwork that she was in awe. That was awesome. But then she, she kind of switched gears a little bit and she said, Sharon, what your staff did, the librarians were right all along. She said, what, what they have created at 101 really is showing, you know, a glimpse of what 43 can be, what it will be in its new iteration. Because if you just look at 101, the way it's set up and the way we are able to provide our services there, it, it says a lot about the library staff. So I just wanted to reiterate that again. And that's really, that's really everything. Yeah, we're just settling in. We're settling in.
And I think we're developing a new library code where we just speak in numbers, 101, 43. Kind of, kind of, kind of appropriate for the beginning of the football season. No one, 43. All right, any questions for the library director? Okay, so, um, thank you, everybody. It's nice to see you. Jean, don't get lost out there. If you do, send up a flare and Tammy will come. And we look forward to seeing you all, all soon. Stay well, everybody.
Thank you. Take care.